Okay, Donna, your mic's on now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear us? You can hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
You hear it in the phone?
Can they see you?
Say someone is saying me? Maybe we'll work.
We can see you.
Don? We can see you. I can't hear you.
Click the mic on the, you've got your mic up, Donna.
But that wouldn't help whether you can hear us or not. Do you have speakers on the computer?
No. We're gonna have to do another thing.
At least we can see you, Donna.
Alright, I'm gonna have to put you down. Okay. Alright. One of Nancy's on it.
Neil at the top right, you click on it.
Michael, tell Nancy his number, Harry. Michael?
Yes?
I'm gonna get your Nancy's number because Harry doesn't feel like he can walk her through.
Okay.
Okay, he's gonna get it.
I'm gonna send Brian a message to make sure he knows.
Okay, here's um, here's Nancy's number. You ready? Seven eight one, five nine three, zero nine two nine.
Thank you.
Nancy's gonna get a lot of phone calls.
Is this live?
Live, are we?
Don, when are we going live? Don Hesse.
Oh, we went live.
We went live at six o'clock.
Right, thank you.
Oh, no.
I think we're, I think we're just waiting for Brian Castellanos, right?
Has Brian tried to get on? Do people know?
Does anybody, I haven't heard from him. People should, should try to keep their uh, mic muted if there's anything in the background. It's a reminder.
From my, from my perspective, on the, on the last meeting, if everyone can hear me, this is uh, Tom. From the last meeting, I could see uh, everybody was muted and if wanted to speak, you unmuted. I can't see that on this uh, at this meeting, so if you want to speak while we're, just raise your hand, I can see all of you. Um, and if I don't recognize you, then you can speak up, but, but uh, raise your hand. I can see everyone here, so as we go through the meeting, if you want to speak, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you, and I think it's right, otherwise, keep your uh, keep your uh, phones, your um, voices muted, so uh, you don't interrupt what's going on. Does that make sense to everyone? Where's Jared?
Yeah, if you, if you, you click the little uh, button of people in the top right, that might, that might show the list of, of people who are in the meeting for you.
Uh, I see everyone, I just don't see the, so I see uh, all of you on, on screen. I just don't see the, the last meeting, it would show whether you was muted or not, and I was able to say.
There's a little white button of like, little people on the top right.
Okay, yep, I see that.
What channel is this on? Channel twenty-two?
Uh, view, view everyone. Yep, I've got you all viewed up there, but it still doesn't show me the, that you're either muted or not.
If you look at their microphones next to the names, it will have a, a, a line through the ones that are muted, and one without, so Don Hesse has a microphone that's not, there's no line, so he's unmuted. But everyone else, um.
I don't, I don't have that up on this, I have a different laptop, Mike, so.
Okay.
So I think, so I, I, that's why I'm just saying, for, if you wanna, if you wanna speak, just raise your hands and I'll recognize you, as I can see all of you. So I can, I can recen- recognize you as you see, as I see your hands raised.
Alright, I'm gonna start the recording.
Oh, okay, are we ready to go? Everybody ready to go? Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a flag?
Uh, I have, I have one.
This conference will now be recorded.
I will lean off and show you one flag, and I think there's a flag also on, on, where Don Hesse is, but I have a flag behind me.
Okay.
So I'm just going to uh, this is the third special meeting of the school committee, coming to order on April second, twenty twenty at six P M. The cer- third special meeting of the Lynn School Committee will be held on Thursday, April second, twenty twenty at six P M, via the GoToMeeting platform. Pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order, acting pursuant to the powers provided by chapter six thirty-nine of the Acts of nineteen fifty, and section two A of chapter seventeen, the Massachusetts general laws, the meeting chambers will be closed to the public. However, the meeting will be made available to the public by adequate alternative methods, that being Lynn community television and/or a video conference recording. And uh, before we get into the meeting, uh, as we move forward, I would, I would think just to uh, comply with this, that we do a roll call, just to recognize everyone that's here, if people are listening in. So um, if me, if anyone wants to do a roll call, uh, to see who's here, and people can, can respond as present.
Is Nan gonna do that, or do you want me to do that, or?
I, I see Nan's here, I can call, I can call her all. I see Nan's on the screen, but I'm not sure if she can.
Doesn't ever like to phone one.
Mary, Mary, would you like to uh, call her all? I'll let Mary Jules, will you call her all? Or I can call, I'll, I'll call, I'll, I'll call the names and uh, you can record them.
Credit.
I'll just, I'll just call them as I see them. Uh, Lorraine Gately?
Present.
Jared Nicholson?
Present.
Michael Sadowite?
Present.
Ron Ford?
Present.
Brian Castellanos?
Present.
Donna Coppola?
Present.
And Tom McGee, present. Uh, with that, I do have a flag behind me. I'll ask everyone to stand and join me in salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic which stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
And I'd ask everyone to uh, stay, remain standing, and uh, in a moment of silence, in uh, in memory of former school committee member, friend, colleague, great leader in the city of Lynn, made a huge impact on the city, who will be greatly missed, uh, and is a big loss for our community, uh, Deborah Smith Walsh, who passed away on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Thank you very much. Um, we have on the agenda uh, pretty much new business, so I'm gonna go right to new business. And um, the first bit of uh, the first business that is on is declaring health supply surplus. Um, would uh, Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
I can, Mayor, thank you. Uh, just wanna make sure everyone can hear me okay? Yes. Yes. Okay. Um, so uh, my understanding uh, by law is that um, schools can't summarily, school districts can't summarily donate items purchased uh, with tax dollars. Uh, the school committee would need to declare it as surplus first, and, and then those items uh, be given away or donated. Um, we're doing this in sort of uh, backwards fashion, um, because we've uh, already donated a number of items, uh, many of which I would be considered personal protective equipment, or P P E, uh, things like gloves, masks, uh, sanitizing wipes, um, hand sanitizer, uh, digital thermometers. Uh, and, and we did so pretty quickly, uh, to meet the needs, and we, we felt like we needed to sort of uh, act urgently, and so um, uh, you received in your packets, um, a pretty detailed account of what's been donated uh, thus far, and so I'm seeking a retroactive vote uh, by the, the school committee to declare these items uh, surplus, and maybe ask the committee to consider um, extending us some flexibility to contributor, to continue to uh, donate items as needed, uh, to, either to the city to mitigate the issues related to COVID-nineteen, or to men- community health, which is where all of these items went.
Uh, I'll speak to that, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and, and uh, it was great to be able to access tho- those uh, materials and, and protective um, gear that was necessary, the uh, the thermometers in particular were needed pretty quickly, and uh, they were available, and I wanna thank uh, the administration and the nurses and, and all those who helped make, allow that to be accessed uh, promptly. Uh, those are really in a great need in our community, and working through the emergency management team and, and Dr. Tutwiler and, and uh, the uh, head of the, um, the head of the, the health department in the city, as well as others. Uh, we are really working to uh, take on this COVID-nineteen challenge we face together, and uh, by making those materials available, and I think asking for materials that uh, may be needed in the future to be uh, surplus, um, is a great uh, move forward for us as a committee. Again, I wanna thanks the superintendent and the, and the administration for being willing to do that. Obviously, we're, we needed those right away, so we took them before we were able to have the meeting, but uh, I think under the circumstances, it was appropriate, and, and we're asking for the committee to both uh, approve what we did, and, and to allow us, I think, the motion to allow us to uh, uh, take other materials as surplus moving forward, giving uh, um, myself and the superintendent, uh, ability to do that based on this current crisis. I see uh, Member Sadowite has, would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Patrick, for, for that update, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, it's this uh, is this, is this actually surplus, or is this actually um, material that were within our schools for our, our students, or is this like, kept away in the storage unit?
So uh, these are, oh, I'm sorry. Um, these are items that were school in session, we, we would be using in our, you know, daily work with students. Uh, so it, I, you know, it, it is not uh, actually surplus, but uh, I think that's, my understanding is that's the mechanism through which school districts can give away things, they have to be declared surplus.
And it's a great, it's a great question.
When we go back.
Go ahead, go ahead, Member Sadowite.
So when we go, go back. Sorry, so when we go back to school, uh, my, my um, thought is, you know, there's still several months, or two months left, if, if we are going back on, on May fourth. Um, there's gonna be a, a heavy backlog to reorder these things, that's gonna take probably several months to, to bring us back up to par, in order to, to handle uh, the needs of our sixteen thousand students, so do we already have a plan in place? Do we have a back order, uh, or an order forth? Has anyone spoke to Kathy about this? Um, she's, obviously the, the nurse manager. Um, you wanted to still listen with that, just so we can have more information?
That's a great, that's a great, yeah, go ahead, Doctor.
I'm sorry, man, go ahead.
No, you, you go ahead, Doctor.
Uh, so uh, much of the uh, coordination of uh, these supplies has been done uh, by Kathy McNulty, um, and certainly, you know, what's, some of the stuff that's been given here, just needs to be given back, cleaned, and then we can use it, right? So things like thermometers and, um, you know, actually, that might be really the only thing. Uh, maybe the gowns, um, that were taken uh, for, for, uh, for Lynn Tech. Um, so, so there, there is not yet a plan in place uh, for when we return, I was actually just in the supply closet for the, um, in the nursing office a couple of days ago, and we did not empty out all of it. Um, so there is still some stuff there. Uh, is it enough to sufficiently cover uh, nursing staff or special ed staff? That's where some of this stuff goes. Um, I'd have to get Kathy's um, opinion on that, but I think that um, the seriousness, the severity of this situation uh, with which we find ourselves, um, necessitates that kind of risk.
Thank you.
And we're working, and, and I'll follow up on that, and then we'll go to Member Gately. Um, it is, it is quite a serious situation in terms of having these materials available. Uh, we are working to get um, the materials we need, uh, I was actually talking to the Mirror of Beverly today, related to some other opportunities, but maybe to get some of the uh, uh, the P P E protective um, equipment. Um, uh, uh, pretty exciting, uh, in all this terrible times. Our story today, or a good story, I guess, with um, one point two million N-ninety-five masks coming in uh, through Governor Baker, uh, as well as the New England Patriots flying in from China, uh, that's, that's a story that broke today. Uh, that, that means nine hundred thousand N-ninety-five masks uh, will be made available, so I think the reality of the situation we face, and the pooling of resources to get us through this is what we're, we're needing to do, I think it's a great question, uh, Michael. Uh, but I think under the circumstances, we need the materials now, and we will work on a plan to try and, with the, with the administration to make sure the supplies that are necessary to the schools are there as well, so we're we're working through a pretty uh, evolving and, and changing dynamic every day, but it's um, those were the kind of things we needed right away, as we're starting to see a very substantial spike in the, in the cases, I think it was one oh six this morning in the city of Lynn. Uh, and that means working with our, both our nurses at the city side, as well as the nurses that are starting to pitch in and volunteer uh, from the school side, as we, as we deal with a lot of these issues, so it's um, uh, you know, it, it's trying to balance both, both sides and, and threading the needle through, uh, but again, I think it's, it's important that we do this, and we'll, we'll work to uh, address the needs of the students as we move, we're at least, we're looking at least at May fourth right now, uh, in terms of coming back to school, so uh, it's a good question. And Member Gately, um, I know you're gonna call, you're gonna have a question. Or comments?
I mean, Dr. Tutwiler. Dr. Tutwiler, this, this list of materials, um, Kathy probably went through the supply closet and took out what was in excess, and then left some stuff for our schools, that's what it sounds like. So she would have a better handle on knowing whether we, we should have enough for May and June. So she just really did take the surplus that we used for March and April, right? That's what this is, this list.
I mean, I.
Am I correct on that?
That, that sounds logical, um, when I look at uh, the materials, there, there are materials in there, is it enough to sustain for um, the months of May and June where we were to return? I don't know at an eyeball glance, but um, I, I can certainly circle back to Kathy on that. Uh, and we did just receive a, a shipment of materials for the nurse's office this week also, so I, I, I don't know if she's already beginning, working on replenishing some of the stuff. I'd have to get, get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other comment, now, Member Nicholson, then Member Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna uh, thank the, the team at Lynn Public Schools that was able to make this happen, I think it's, I'd, I'd love to see uh, a district stepping up for the city in a, in a time of need, and I think uh, that kind of collaboration is, is really what's gonna get us through these times. Um, I, I think it's a good question to be planning about the future, I also think uh, it's worth noting that presumably part of the, the, the uh, milestones we'll be looking for to get back to the, having the district back in, in session, in fact, that uh, things will be smoothing out, and therefore, um, at the same time as production ramping up around the world of the kind of supplies that we need, that there'll be more available. Uh, be out of mind, is, should, should uh, make us uh, feel comfortable with, with that plan, so I'm embarrassed.
Member Ford?
See, I, I think we should start look, you know, just look at right now, I think May fourth is, is a vision, I don't think we're gonna make it back by May fourth. And if there's a shortage of gloves, or a shortage of anything we can do to help. I know my granddaughter's a nurse at Salem Hospital, they're wearing masks a week, you know, two or three days in a row. One nurse said she had hers on all week, because they don't have the supplies. I don't think we should be sitting on anything that we can make available.
Uh, any other?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the um, question.
There's a motion on the table, I say, uh, uh, one, one before, uh, Member Castellanos had a, his hand up, and then we'll go to the motion. I'm a little different here, but Member Castellanos, then we'll go to Member Coppola.
Yeah, well, I just wanna echo my colleagues, and I thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, Patrick, and I know it's, we've been in ongoing communication throughout the week, um, I just have a question about access, if, you know, we're utilizing these, these materials. Uh, I know uh, you guys opened up City Hall, what is the plan for this, the rest of the month? If we're gonna, and, and I agree with uh, Member Ford, um, we're not sitting on these supplies, especially if we're starting to get abundance of supplies coming into the city, what are we gonna do for access, uh, per, like, how we, what does that operation look like? What is it, what is it gonna entail?
There's a whole, uh, it's a good question, there's a whole team of um, people working on a number of, we have a couple of different task force. Uh, City Hall is pretty much closed. We're, we're working almost, I'd say ninety-five percent plus remotely from City Hall, so there's limited, I know the, the uh, Director of Health is, is still in the building, and it might be one or two others that need to be in the building at certain times. So we're working remotely. Uh, we are setting up an operation, it's already set up, started this week at the Marshall Middle School, to monitor, excuse me, to monitor and uh, track uh, the cases in the city, which is, is, which is a big piece of this, once the, once uh, someone tests positive in the city, then they get, uh, they get contacted, and then the, the people who are in contact with them, there's a whole process that goes in, and so we were able to, again, through the administration's uh, support, um, take over the library at the Marshall Middle School and create a uh, uh, a, a, a pretty good setup there, so that we can bring in the nurses that are, that are doing this follow-up, so we've got a number of things going on, and we're also gonna be, be using the Marshall Middle School, some of these materials are right at the school now, for uh, as materials do come in, we'll be using the Marshall Middle School for uh, storage of some of those, we've got plenty of space, both in the gym and the cafeteria, so we are, we are working a number of different, many different balls in the area, in, in the air, uh, but we uh, we have been really able to consolidate some of the operation related to the COVID-nineteen at the Marshall Middle School. It's not, it's not conflicting with the grab and go. Uh, it's actually in a different part of the building, so we're, we're uh, we're putting the, you know, the materials we need, we're gonna store there, and the, as they're being used, we're gonna keep track of all those materials as well, so it's not just uh, they're coming in and going out, we'll know where they're going and, and where the need is, so uh, it's a good question. With that, uh, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, we'll go to Member Coppola?
Um, I'd like to move the motion that we um, transfer this health supply surplus, and any other surplus that we deem appropriate along the way.
Second.
Motion is seconded, we, we'll do a roll call? We have a second?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Coppola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, uh, uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero.
Sorry to interrupt, uh, but a question came in uh, from Sheila O'Neil, that it's, it's not, uh, right now, the meeting is not televised, do you know what channel it's on?
I don't. Don Hesse, are you, like, you, can you speak to that, are you on?
Don?
Don's probably in the studio. But he's pretty quick.
So, so again, I think as we, as we went into this, and I'm not sure what, uh, I think there has been some challenges at Lynn Cam since the last meeting, in terms of their ability to uh, continue to do some of their um, programming. But as I stated from the beginning, um, if, if uh, be made available to the public, if not on Lynn Community Television, and maybe Don can speak to why it's not going live, that uh, a video conference recording would be available, so obviously, we want to be live here. But if, um, I see Don coming in, Donna, do you, can you, can you speak to that?
Twenty-two, well, I'm sending the signal down the Lynn Cam. It's twenty-two Verizon twenty, I mean, twenty-two Lynn Cam, twenty-seven Verizon. I reset the sending unit, and I'm gonna get in touch with Pedro right now to make sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we can let her know that we're working on it, and, and anybody else is trying to watch, we'll, we'll try and get that up. Thank you, Don. Next on the agenda is um, uh, a request of transfer of funds. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, um, just quickly, um, if folks didn't know, uh, when I was a teacher, I was a history teacher, and one of my favorite um, um, historical figures was Winston Churchill, and one of them, known for lots of reticisms, and one of them was the, that the optimist uh, sees opportunity uh, in every difficulty. Um, and make no mistake about it, uh, this is a very difficult uh, time in which we find ourselves, but there's also an opportunity. Uh, and that opportunity comes um, by way of um, bills that we do not have to pay at, at this point, or expenses um, that uh, we don't have to uh, face because school is not in session. Uh, one of them is substitutes, right? Uh, our substitute line is stagnant because school is not in session, and there's, there's, there's no need for them. Um, we see that as an opportunity to leverage funds, um, to address a real need uh, in the district and in our community around technology. Uh, so in the packets, uh, you receive the document, a memo from uh, Kevin McHugh to me, uh, requesting to transfer funds from a salary line to uh, a supply line, and the supply line would be in the technology realm, um, to allow us to explore options, um, to move as quickly as we can to get uh, devices in the hands of, of, of students. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that. Uh, I will say that um, in my, this is my fifth year in the district, I don't recall uh, this happening over the past five years. Um, and I, I will credit uh, Mr. McHugh for that, I mean, we're, 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 we're pretty tight and uh, pretty thoughtful a- around the budget. Uh, but I think we have a unique opportunity before us to do something uh, good for kids, and uh, I'm asking for your support.
See, Member Nicholson, then Member Sadowite.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the, the, the quick thinking and the resourcefulness, and, and for that optimism, the optimism, Dr. Tutwiler, and, and, and to Kevin for the, for the um, the plan, and absolutely support the push for us to get technology into the hands of our students as fast as we can. Um, and I totally understand the, the utilization of substitutes will be lower. I also think that uh, we, I, 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 I hope that we can uh, think about whether there's gonna be some substitutes left, I mean, uh, we're asking teachers to work remotely, and uh, there will be people who still get sick. Uh, and we will need people to reach those students when those people are sick. Uh, particularly as the virus spreads, but even just normal uh, reasons why someone would need to be out. And uh, I think as we think about the, running this district for the next however many months remotely, um, having, like, understanding that, that some things will, will uh, that, 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 that we'll need to be able to cover people, and uh, having substitutes to be able to, to, to do that will be really helpful. And then on the subs, from the substitute side, I mean, I think we're seeing a lot of um, employers looking to, to try to give their employees opportunities to maintain an income, um, when they're no, when they're hourly, right? Um, and to the extent that the Lynn Public Schools uh, can reach out to those substitutes who are depending on that kind of an income, in, in what are going to be very hard economic times, as it, it, that, that serves as soup, right? Because we have uh, things for them to do that will be helpful for the education. Uh, I think we should keep that on the radar. Now, I'm entirely support, I, I totally understand that this, the need will go down, and therefore, we still have funds, and so I'm supportive of the, of the plan. Um, and I think it's imperative that we uh, do everything we can to get the kids the technology they need. Um, and I think it's imperative that we, uh, do everything we can to get the kids the technology, to access the remote learning that we're setting up. Um, but just wanted to add, add that to the consideration.
Yeah, uh, from Mayor? Yeah, just quickly, um, uh, that, that is an, an excellent point on, um, substitutes and the, the rare, very real reality that, um, some of our staff might fall ill, uh, and thus not be in a place to actively be, you know, connecting with students and families. Um, I'll say very quickly that I, I, I backed up plan on that. Um, it's to leverage the other adults, um, who interact with students, um, in a particular class or setting. So for example, uh, the easiest thing to think of is on the secondary level, uh, you know, a student's going to see, you know, has six different teachers, or seven different teachers. Um, and so while, you know, let's say a math teacher might fall ill, um, that student and that family is still receiving regular contact and support from the other teachers, um, uh, at, at that school, and so, um, and then on the elementary level, um, similarly, you know, you have a classroom teacher, but you also have specialists that work with the students, art, music, um, phys ed, you have a reading teacher who push in and work with students who are also expected to be in contact. So, um, you know, the, the, the quick, the, the, the real, um, anchor of, um, of our outreach plan is familiarity, uh, and making connections and checking in. Um, bringing a substitute into that scenario would be a little challenging, because there's no, there's no relationship, and there's no schema, and we have to skill that person up really fast on the platforms that we've created for communication and the processes that we've set up. I'm not saying that that won't happen, it potentially could. Um, but I think that, um, our quick response, if, um, if an educator falls ill and cannot be in touch, is to rely on the other teachers, uh, or social worker, or guidance counselor, to continuously provide support for that student.
Thank you, Doctor. Um, member Sadoway, and then member Gaitley.
Uh, great, so I, my question is, wh- what is, is there a plan in place, or is this, uh, just to, to allocate the funds, uh, in the department in order to make that plan? Uh, and then I have, uh, something else, uh, that kinda, I guess, goes with that specific question is, how is this gonna affect, uh, net school spending? Like you said, um, we don't have a lot of these other expenses, I'm assuming our electric bill's gonna be lower. Um, uh, we're only paying full-time, uh, employees. Um, the, say we are able to get, um, electronics, I'm assuming it's gonna take several weeks in order for our IT staff, which is limited, uh, uh, to get it up and running, and then how are we gonna disperse it to the students? Uh, and then lastly, what about internet? Are these things gonna a- already have internet connection?
So, uh, I'm gonna answer, I'm gonna do the bookends, I'll respond to the first part and the last part, and I'll ask Kevin to speak to the, uh, net school spending piece. Um, so, um, when we get to the last, um, agenda item, uh, I was gonna speak to, at a high level, um, the thinking around, um, getting students' devices. I wanna be clear that this is not an attempt to get a device in every student's hand. Number one, not all of them need them. Uh, and number two, we, we simply don't have enough. Um, not even with leveraging, uh, this transfer. Uh, the idea is to, to make decisions about devices, uh, anchored in equity and urgency. Uh, we have some groups of students who simply cannot access, who, who might, you know, simply cannot access what's been given, uh, to them, and namely, I'm thinking about, um, certain groups of special ed students and need it, those students need a device, need apps, um, need certain programs that are, that can only be leveraged on a computer, um, to engage. So, that, from an equity standpoint, we would wanna service or provide devices for those students. And then, uh, in the urgency, and I'm gonna speak to this again later, but from an urgency standpoint, I mean, we're, we're hyper-focused and really thinking deeply about our seniors and getting them to the finish line, some students who are missing credits, or, you know, maybe didn't do as well quarters one and two, or need to do credit recovery, that don't have a device, don't have a smartphone, um, and need to get on our Apex Credit Recovery System to start working. Um, you know, that, that's who we're thinking of from an urgency standpoint, and leveraging these funds would certainly help with that. Um, the connectivity piece is, is a tough one. Um, I, I will tell you, I, I, I think everyone knows that we attempted to survey families about, uh, both, uh, the extent to which, um, homes had an internet connection, and whether or not there was, uh, an internet-connected device that a student had access to daily. Um, when we did it through the telephone, we got about twenty-six hundred responses out of sixteen thousand, so not really enough to make a decision, uh, there, and then when we did it online and through Facebook, um, we got about twelve hundred responses, also not enough, but still some interesting pieces of information, and one thing that we learned is, um, for those who responded, the vast majority, this is phone and, um, through Facebook and, uh, the internet survey, have an internet connection at home. Fewer families have a device available for a student to use. Uh, and so, um, we've, you know, we can work with families on this, do we have a ready-made solution around connectivity issues? No, we don't. Um, there are hotspots that could be purchased, I, I'll tell you now, they're super, uh, expensive. Um, it's, we're, we're, we're looking into that, um, but we think our first move, the first step is to get the devices here, and then, you know, fill the gaps where, where they exist. Kevin, can you speak to the net school spending piece? Kevin McHugh?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the net school spending piece is very important, and this is one of the reasons why we're trying to move quickly with one of these expenditures, because this will count towards net school spending. Uh, depending on, we've already been inquiring as far as these devices, we're hoping to have an answer earl, either tomorrow or next week, as far as availability, if this motion goes through, and get the purchase going. As long as the purchase has been in the process of, it will count as an expenditure for this year, because at the end of the year, it counts anything we've already expended, plus anything encumbered, which means there's a purchase order in process and we're moving, if it came on July tenth for an item, for example, it would still count for net school spending for this fiscal year. So I've been talking with Michael Bertino about it, because we're both, you know, very aware of what the situation is happening now that our, we are starting to see some savings across the board, and we gotta make sure that we try to do everything possible to meet that net school spending amount. So, that's one of the reasons why we like to do this, to get this going as quick as possible, and we won't hold back a little bit of fund, because I still don't know what the, if we're coming back on May fourth or not. Uh, so I have to have a little bit of contingency, but as we continue to move forward through this process, we would just keep moving funds if we need to, and get the, uh, things, so we can get our, meet our obligation for net school spending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. So I know member Gaitley and member Castellanos. I don't see member Capola, do you have a, or do you want to weigh in, Adona?
Yes, I do, I have, I have some questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to member Gaitley, member Castellanos, then member Capola.
Okay, um, Patrick? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, one of my questions, uh, you answered already, is who is gonna get these, um, laptop computers? So you answered that, you also answered, I'm still curious about free internet, because there are some companies, I heard, I don't know if it's true, but they, they have offered free internet for school districts. I don't know if you're looking into it, I'm sure Deb, you're looking into it, and Kim, you've probably been looking into it, and Matt. Um, the other question I have is, um, assignments that we are giving out throughout this week, and I'm so happy, because I'm hearing really good things about, uh, teachers being in touch with their students, and actually getting to communicate with their school, students in one way, one form or another. But, um, someone brought up something to me about, uh, how is, how is the measurement gonna work? Because I'm, I'm hearing that a lot of parents, there's a lot of stress on the parents, um, because some of them are essential workers, the mothers are nerds, the fathers are working also, and they can't be there to help their student, or help their child with the assignments, and they're freak, not freaking out, but they're very concerned that this could hurt them. But, over at Saint Mary's, we are working towards, I touch bases with my students every day or every week, and then they turn in the work, but, but it's not actually, like, the third and fourth quarter are gonna blend. So that it would be like a combination of those grades, so the child would still pass. So I guess that's a concern. And with these laptops going out, I thought this was a nice place to bring this in to ask you, because you answered everything else.
Okay, uh, if I may, um, well, my light turns off every night again, if I'm still, um.
Yes, Doctor, but, well, go ahead.
So, so the, you know, we, we've been pretty clear with, with, uh, both students and families, that the material that is posted, um, is, um, enrichment. Um, it is not material that is expected to be turned in. Uh, it is not being graded. Um, teachers are giving feedback to students, um, on the work that they're doing, but that's the extent of it. Um, and that actually closely aligns with bestie guidance on what stu-, uh, what schools should be doing with their remote learning plans. And the reason why is that we, you know, we've got sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two kids, we can't guarantee that all of them are able to access it. Um, we're not able to reach some of the families. Um, we're not able to provide, uh, accommodations for some students on, um, IEPs with some of the work. And so, you, you can't mandate that it be done unless you can guarantee all of those things, and we can't. Um, so it, it is considered, and, and it almost, it pains me to say this, although it is written in the frequently asked questions document, that, um, the work is not mandatory. Um, but we really, we've been stressing, we really want students to keep reading, keep writing, keep figuring, keep engaging with their teachers, because we're, we're worried about lost ground in terms of learning.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, uh, I know we're gonna remember Castellanos, but I just, uh, member Gaitley, you, you brought up a good point related to the, uh, the potential to have access for students in different communities. I was talking to Mike Portino earlier on this, that there is some companies that are looking to creating hotspots in communities, so we will be exploring that to help hopefully address some of the, you know, if, if possible, address some of the, uh, the connections that are unavailable. Dr. Tutwiler, you wanna speak to that?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for mentioning that. Um, Comcast was offering, and, and my understanding is that they still are, uh, offering, um, internet connections for free for homes during, uh, the, the cancellation. Some of our families have had success with that, some of them have not. Uh, so, um, there is that option.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Member Castellanos, and then member Capola.
Thank you, Patrick, and, um, thank you, everybody, uh, for the insight. I have, um, I'm very concerned about, uh, the kids who are currently special ed, I think you talked about it a little bit, Patrick, about these students who can't access these technologies, that need those applications, they need this, uh, to, 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 to meet their achievement gaps. I, I'm just concerned that it's, this is, we're in a crisis, and I, I am in support of getting these technologies, I just feel like the, the way to prioritize these kids, these students, need to, we need to focus on really strategically getting this out to them in a way that it's gonna be equitable. Um, and I don't think it's gonna be everybody, and I, I think, uh, it's showing that we have a good app, uh, excuse me, I don't, let me take a step back, how are we gonna set up the application process for students and parents to engage in these different, uh, technologies? Could you give me some insight on that?
Yeah, I, I might have to circle back to you on that, uh, and maybe, um, at a, at a future meeting, maybe, you know, our next meeting, uh, bring, uh, the Administrator of Special Education, Felicia Jamerson. Um, and that department has been working overtime, connecting with families, providing supports. Um, the next step around, um, the applications on, whether it's iPads, or, or whether it's a, a laptop device, Chromebook, um, I, I personally can't speak to that, but, uh, I can certainly circle back with Felicia. This plan will be written also, so I can share that with you, um, you know, when the, when the ache dries on.
And, uh, kids who have, like, open CRAs, I have kids who have, are involved in the court system, that their court dates have been pushed. Um, but some of them are required to be on Apex already, but they don't, they're already dealing with these issues. These are kids that were already, uh, experiencing chronic absenteeism already, and they're getting even further, further down, um, the path, and it's kinda frustrating to, to see this, because I, I work directly with chil-, kids who are going through this. Uh, what are, what, what are some, so, are they gonna be a priority too as well, when we talk about urgency?
Um, if they are a senior, yes, our first priority is gonna be for the seniors to get them to the finish line. Um, and once we've satisfied the needs at that level, then we'll start looking at, you know, eleventh grade, your underclassmen, what are the needs there that we can satisfy, but following the same philosophical foundation, only in cases where, you know, they wouldn't otherwise be able to access, um, you know, what it is they need to move forward.
And I just have one more follow-up, so, so if kids who are already on the, on the fence, right? Are we gonna be opening up, so, obviously, we're going really far ahead, I'm just a vision. Summer school, is that something that we're planning for those kids? So, when those kids are at a tenth grade who have been struggling, how are we gonna slow it down for them? Because there's a lot of kids who are not getting instruction, they're not getting that routine, they're not involved, and, and we're all going in this together right now, but I just feel like there's a big tsunami gonna hit us, especially with those at-risk students. There's a lot of students right now who are just surviving, they were surviving before, and now this happened. What is the plan?
Right, so, um, it, it's, it's a little early to hatch a plan for that, because so much is unknown. I mean, if we return, which I actually don't think we're going to, but if we return, that will mean something. Um, if we have, uh, if summer is no longer an option to us, right, uh, which is also potential, um, then we'll have to plan accordingly. Um, right now, we're hyper-focused on getting the, the, um, you know, as I said, getting seniors ready into the finish line, making sure that the, the, uh, mental health, emotional needs of, of families are being met, food stability, housing stability, um, and, and getting the resources and activities out to all families. There are probably thirty different, um, scenarios that, or more, that we need to, um, contend with and make plans for, for students that we can move them forward. The one thing that I could say, related to what you, you're concerned about, um, the learning loss, is we are super aware of that, um, and have already had discussions about how the curriculum maps would be slightly different next year to accommodate the loss that's happened this year. Um, if we can create, and I had a conversation with another member, if the, you know, social distance guidelines are, uh, lifted, and, and, uh, group convening, um, guidelines are listed, lifted, and we can have, you know, large groups come together, or classes come together, then we're gonna be looking at some summer programming to, um, catch students up, uh, and fill gaps. Um, but it, it's hard to, it's hard to say I've got a plan for that on April second, because we don't know a week from now, you know, what's gonna happen with that.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, Patrick, because that really is, that means a lot to hear that, and to see that you guys are being proactive, instead of be reactive, you know, it's so vital, uh, to, hopefully we can catch those kids, you know, who are most vulnerable, those families that are vulnerable. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing, I mean, we, we, the, the entire year, our professional development focus for, uh, the leadership team in the LYN public schools has been around equity, we've got, uh, a wonderful facilitator from Chicago who's been working with us. Um, we missed our last, uh, day-long professional development with them, because we, schools are canceled. Um, but we had a two-hour session today with all principals, all directors, um, really focused on the, the very thing that you're talking about, member Castellanos, which is, um, how in our planning and our next step forward, are we mindful of students who are already marginalized, or feeling disconnected in the LYN public schools? Imagine how they must be feeling now, and how do we shift our efforts, um, to bring them into the fold, and to be mindful of them going forward? So just know that that is absolutely front of mind for us.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. Member Capola?
Okay, um, to continue on to what Brian was talking about, um, last time we met, or actually had a meeting, we talked about the guidance people, um, staying in touch with the seniors. or actually had a meeting, we talked about the guidance people, um, staying in touch with the seniors. Do you know, um, if all of the seniors have been contacted so that they are reassured, um, as far as, you know, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, if they, if they've heard from colleges? You know, are they stuck on anything in particular for filling out applications? Have they heard about, um, any scholarships? Um, we talked about that last time, that, you know, could the guidance people get in touch with those seniors? Do you know if that's happened?
Um, I know that guidance has been, can I say definitively that every senior has been contacted by a guidance counselor? I cannot. Um, I can tell you that guidance has been, just as all the other educators have been, very, very, uh, hyper-focused on seniors because, for, for lots of reasons. One, getting them to the finish line, as I was talking about before, uh, which we're still working on refining exactly what that's going to look like. Um, uh, and two, absolutely supporting kids who are, um, you know, many of whom are at the tail end of the college process and, and needing supports. Um, so can I say that every senior, uh, has been reached, uh, by a guidance counselor? I cannot. I can tell you that they've been working really, really hard to support seniors' needs. Um, and I've, I've not heard, um, you know, in my office, and I, I don't know if, um, uh, Deputy Superintendent, uh, Rogero has heard in hers, um, you know, feedback that seniors aren't feeling supported. I will tell you that seniors are, I've heard directly from them, um, expressing lots of anxiety about the things that are important to them. Um, their grades, um, graduation, prom, but I've not heard feedback that they, they're not being, uh, they haven't been contacted by or supported by guidance counselors.
Uh, Deputy Superintendent Rogero, I think is going to comment, uh, remember Capola?
Yeah, okay. Tag on to what Dr. Tuttwiler just said. Um, I have been working very closely with all the secondary principals. Um, we have a Zoom call tomorrow, Kim and I do, uh, with all the principals. And I have a Zoom call set up for next week for the, um, high school principals and guidance, uh, counselors, uh, selected few only because it's kind of hard when you have everyone. It's just too big. So we're, we're going to do a selected few at a time, um, to talk exactly about the seniors, um, the contact. I know they are currently working on contacting their students, especially the seniors. But we've got to figure out what, how, um, what the numbers look like in terms of how many students at, right now, at this point, are ready to, could graduate today. Uh, how many are kind of in the middle and what do we have to do to help them? And what, how, how many are struggling or were struggling, and what do we need to do with them? Apex is on the table. There's lots of conversations that still have to happen before, um, we come to a final decision. The, the contact is happening, but to have specific conversations around colleges and we've got to have answers for them first. And so that's what we've been trying to concentrate on is to figure out what are the answers and the decisions, um, that we're making so that we can share the right information with those seniors.
Okay, um, I, my next question has to, has to do with the, um, you know, you've got twenty-six hundred responses, um, in regards to whether they're hooked up and the child has a device and the twelve hundred on Facebook, which, which could be multiple children. It may be more than the, just, you know, the thirty-eight hundred. And some could have two or three children, and so it could be more. But, um, the ones that we haven't, um, we talked about our last time about, uh, if, if anybody was calling the families, especially the families and the children that we feel are at risk. And, you know, we talked about that the principals know who those families are. And, um, you know, through phone calling, can they complete that for us? To get any answers? So we know that, um, that, uh, the rest of our families and children aren't just floating out there and, and have some contact with us. Did you hear that?
You're, uh, you're, you're muted, Dr. Tuttwiler.
All right, sorry about that. Um, may I answer?
Yes, please.
Um, so we, we've been talking about that, that, that very thing. Um, you know, whether or not it would be feasible, um, and neat and clean for, um, educators, uh, teachers, social workers, um, uh, to ask families about the level of access and then record that in some place that all of that data can be brought together and, and, and made sense of. Um, that is a possibility for us to do. I will tell you, uh, that yes, um, uh, especially since we've made, uh, released on Monday of this week, um, uniform expectations for all educators to be in contact with, um, students in their caseloads uh, at least twice per week. Um, lots of phone calls are being made. Um, the teachers are meet, or, or, and, and various other educators are reaching out through other platforms and making connections with families. So it is possible to do that. We have to really dedicate some careful thought to how we would do that. Um, and not have it be a mess of data that's hard to make sense of. Um, but, but I guess the point I really wanted to underscore, because it sounded like it was a, it was a question. Um, there is robust outreach happening right now.
Okay, thank you. And I have my very last question I have has to do with this, um, transfer of funds. I, uh, is there an amount? Because there is no amount that came through on our paper. So I'm just wondering, what, what amount of money are you looking at? And if, and if Attorney Myhost is here, does that need to be also included in this?
Kevin?
I know in the past, we've done, uh, a number of years ago, we have done transfers from, uh, line to line and not always had an exact amount because it's one of those things where we are closing the books down. We were trying to make sure we were spending all down towards net school spending. Uh, we haven't done one recently. And I don't have an exact amount right now because we're trying to, uh, try, we'll go through all the lines to come up with dollar amounts. Uh, and that's why we've kind of left this open-ended. And if we don't come back, that would allow additional funds that could be utilized to, uh, do an additional purchase of computers.
Uh, John Myhost, uh, you want to speak to that?
Oh, I agree with what Kevin just stated, that in the past, we have deleted the line items. And we just have made a motion to, uh, utilize whatever the balance is in the account. And didn't use specific figures. So it's been done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Yeah, I've said a couple of quick questions about the, about the tech plan for the use of the funds. Um, I think to, to extend that people have, uh, any ideas or connections with, um, big corporations, I think it'd be a good time now to reach out to see if people have surplus equipment. Um, particularly if people aren't hiring or whatever, um, in, in, in times when we wouldn't have been as interested in, in, in equipment, I think that those times have changed. And I know there are some corporations that have surpluses of, of laptops and, and, uh, work equipment. Um, and the other thing, to the connectivity point, I know this is a really tough one. Like you said, that the, the hotspots are expensive. Uh, I've seen, uh, some, some reporting about other districts and other parts of the country, uh, try and use their, their buses to, uh, yeah, yeah. So, uh, something that could be worth looking into.
Uh, we, it actually was, as I was talking to Mike Portino today, that was also something he had brought up, not only through Comcast, but could be used to create hotspots. So there's some ideas and, and, and I guess in unique and interesting times that you find ways to solve the problems we face together. So, uh, uh, any ideas that any of the members have or other things you've heard of? Please share them and we're all, as we make the decisions at the city, city level, as well as we're, we're on the schools. It's, uh, we're all hopefully thinking outside the box and trying to come together to find solutions. So, uh, uh, it's a good point. Other, uh, comments, uh, questions related to this item? Remember Sadoway?
I, I'd just like to, uh, make a motion to bring forth the request of the superintendent, uh, to, uh, transfer those line items in order to, um, buy the equipment.
Motion's been made, is there, is a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yeah.
The Board?
Yes.
Mr. Gaetly?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is, um, uh, let's see. Is discussion of the impact of the coronavirus on the Lynn School Department? And, uh, I don't know if Dr. Tuttwiler, you want to, uh, start, uh, start us off with that?
Glad to. Um, and, yeah, I, I think we, we've actually, through conversation of the other agenda items, touched on a number of the things that, uh, I was going to share. Um, but, but just quickly, um, as we all know, we're rounding, um, the final curve of week three of the cancellation. Um, we continue to try our level best to support families through this crisis. Uh, our approach continues to be anchored in the same philosophical foundation. First, we're providing or connecting families to resources that are foundational, namely, food and housing stability. We continue to offer the grab-and-go lunches, which is now averaging, uh, close to eight hundred meals per day. Uh, we're also in the process of deepening that offering by partnering with the Food Project and the Food Bank to provide, uh, additional groceries for those who need it at our lunch site. Those, uh, that plan is currently evolving. Uh, we want to make sure that families are able to access the mental and emotional health resources. Our team of social workers and SACS, uh, are working, are directly contacting families to check in and where possible, engaging in telehealth services. Further, local resources have been posted broadly. Every school's website, the main Lynn Public Schools website, webpage, and also on Facebook. Um, as has already been communicated, uh, the Lynn Public School staff very quickly assembled activities and resources and posted by grade on the elementary level and grade and content area on the secondary level. These are accessible through schools' individual website. And paper packets were created and distributed on Monday, March sixteenth. We asked teachers to create content that would suffice for four weeks. With the extension of the cancellation from April third to May fourth, we've shifted to a thoughtful, thoughtful approach to academic engagement. An approach that would sustain academic engagement through June twenty-fourth, the end of the school year at this point. Essentially, the Remote Learning Plan, beginning April twenty-seventh, will come in the form of interdisciplinary projects anchored in common themes district-wide. The work will feature the themes of community, adaptations, and reflection. The plan will be accompanied by a recommended schedule for families that offers a framework for a student's day, aligned with Destiny Guidance, which calls for students to be engaged with learning for half of a normal school day, and incorporate physical activity and resource, excuse me, and activities related to the arts. Following our go slow to go fast motto, our grade-three remote learning team met this week to begin working on developing a prototype for remote learning for all grade levels. Other grade level and content teams are being assembled and will leverage the exemplar created by the le, grade-three team in short order. This crisis, as Brian referred to earlier, has disproportionately affected our most vulnerable students. Equity and our core value of inclusiveness must be a top consideration in our planning. Accordingly, any student would be able to engage with this enrichment experience without technology. And grade-level plans will be printed centrally at Lynn Tech and diverse, uh, and dispersed at our meal sites in addition to being posted on the district website. In all, uh, this remote learning plan will allow teachers to better support and communicate with students and families as the recommended content will be universalized and will calibrate our focus, our conversations, and our feedback. This week, we also released expectation, an expectations document for all staff. While staff are already meaningfully engaging with students through various platforms such as Zoom, Facebook, and the good old telephone, we established uniform expectations through this document. Essentially, this calls for all staff to be in touch with students and families through one mechanism, memes, platform, or another, at least twice weekly. We're moving to universalized platforms. We are using ClassDojo at the elementary level and Jupiter at the secondary level. We have already launched ClassDojo at the elementary level, and I sent an email out, um, with some information on that today. Uh, and we're in the process of launching Jupiter. Both platforms offer a number of outreach features and translations for many languages. Both can be ac, accessed via smartphone, neither require a laptop or a computer. On the topic of computers, you already know that we intend to explore a purchase of devices for students. We know that some staff are in need. Yesterday, we executed a laptop loaner program for any faculty member who required it. Just shy of two hundred were distributed. We can't expect staff to engage and contact using various platforms when they don't have the tools to do so. We're working on a plan to do so for the students, but I want to declare concretely that we do not have enough for every student. Therefore, the plan will reflect equity and urgency. As I described earlier, by equity, I mean providing devices for students who would otherwise be unable to access enrichment activities or resources. By urgency, I mean students who have an urgent need to complete academic requirements. Examples would be seniors, students in our early college programs, or students who are taking AP classes as the College Board will administer those exams online only. More to come. So this is a high-level overview. I want to remind all that specific answers to questions can be found on the Frequently Asked Questions link on the Lynn Public Schools website. I personally update that, um, that link, that information as it comes in. Uh, again, this is a very interesting time in which we find ourselves. Here again, I want to celebrate the Lynn Public School staff. They continue to work hard, display extraordinary dedication to the health and safety of students, first and foremost, but also to their learning. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Number Gaetly, then Member Nicholson, then Member Castellanos.
Okay. This one is for you, Mayor. Mayor McGee, I was just wondering about our substitute teachers. Are they eligible to collect unemployment?
Uh, that's a good question.
I'm not sure on that.
That's a good question, and maybe, remember, um, uh, maybe Attorney Myhost can speak to that. I, that's a great question that, um, I don't have the answer to.
That is not my field, unemployment, uh, well, however, it's, unless, I do not believe they'd be able to, I do not believe they'd be able to collect.
Hey, Dr. Tuttwiler, you want to speak to that? I hear you, John. You don't believe they'll be able to collect. Dr. Tuttwiler?
Correct.
Uh, I, I was going to actually call on Kevin McQ to answer that question. I, I believe that he can.
Uh, only ones that'll be, uh, that aren't getting paid, uh, day-to-day, uh, long-term subs are still working. So it's a, a day-to-day that would just do like a day here and there. So they should be eligible to collect, I would believe, because they're not a real employee. And if they were, it'd be very minimal amount because they don't work every, a lot of them don't work every day.
Uh, the only thing I can say to that, the only thing I can say to that, and I'll go, Member Gaetly, I, I'd just like to speak to that for a second. And then, uh, the only, uh, the only thing I would speak to to that, and again, I'm not sure with the federal legislation, the two-trillion-dollar legislation. I know they did do a lot of different things related to unemployment, expanded unemployment. So I can't speak directly to the, but I think, uh, reviewing that and maybe working, uh, as it flushes out. I know we worked both with Senator Markey and Warren on, as that was released, and, and Congressman Moulton to kind of clarify exactly what's in that legislation. So there may be an ability for some of the substitutes to, to access some of those dollars. I think that was the goal. So, um, the, again, in a unique time like this, depending what the federal legislation allows, there may be opportunities for the, uh, for that. But I, I, again, I'm not, I'm not saying there is, but I think, I think we need for that, but I, again, I'm not, I'm not saying there is, but I think, I think we need to probably delve a little deeper into the federal legislation to get a, get a feel for exactly who is going to be impacted and allowed to do that. And not only is unemployment is part of that, the unemployment is, um, almost ten million people in the last two weeks have applied for unemployment. Uh, there's, uh, there's money to, for a three or four month period to actually, on top of unemployment, to cover the, the difference between what people might be working, what be making working and the difference between unemployment, unemployment benefits will allow. So I think it's a great question and, and I think we can explore it a little further to see if that might, under these circumstances, allow them to file and, and, um, that's something we can work on. Did you have another question, Member Gately? Do you have another question?
I had one other question, um, and it's silly, but like April vacation, like, explain to me how we're doing April vacation, Dr. Tuttwiler. Are we just going to like that's, we're taking that week off and then we'll come back the week afterwards? We don't continue our.
Yeah, uh, this is what I was, well, uh, so at present, if you follow the current calendar, what you just described is absolutely the case. Um, there are, if the district decided, if you decided and if, uh, the union agreed to continue providing, um, supports for families over the four days, right? The Monday, the Patriots Day is a holiday, but the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, um, then those four days would come off of the end of the school year.
Oh. Okay. Can you get back to us on it?
Plan to.
All right, we vote. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Member Nicholson, then Member Castellanos.
Thank you, um, thank you, Pat, for the update and, and again, to the Lynn Public Schools team for, for pulling all this together in, in such crazy times. Um, been impressed with the, the speed to which, uh, the, the programming is, is, is coming together and really appreciate that and, and know the urgency that everyone's feeling to try to, uh, keep up the learning any way possible, uh, particularly across the board and particularly for those who are, who are most, uh, uh, put at risk, who are most vulnerable of our students. Um, and, and, and obviously, I, I, I think a special continued shout out to the, to the grab and go, uh, staff, the people who are, uh, working that. It seems like that's become a real lifeline for the city and, and really admire the, the people that are, uh, making that work for the families who need it. Um, the question I had, I, I think one of the challenges from the school department is we're obviously dealing with this, uh, unprecedented crisis right now. And at the same time, we are in a period where we would have been planning for the following year. And at the same, and, and that, that plan is going to be all the more difficult because we're now thinking about how can we make up the gaps that we've, uh, now found ourselves in as a result of the closures. I think that is, what feels really daunting for me is that we were expecting to have a really great opportunity with the, the budget next year, uh, to, to address a lot of the needs that we've been talking about for a long time. And what, what scares me about the situation we're in now, uh, not just with, for the public health repercussions, but the economic repercussions and thinking about what that did to, uh, state local revenues than the last time we had such economic challenges, uh, and just the possibility, and we're already seeing that, that state revenues plummet. And when state and local government spends a huge percentage of their budget on education, uh, if state and local revenues fall, we can't help but be concerned that that's going to hit us. Uh, have you, ha, ha, has, have we gotten any kind of guidance from the state about how to start that planning, uh, given that's what we would have been doing now, uh, understanding that we're so focused on trying to, to create a new, a whole, a new world for our students in, in, in the next couple of months while it's closed, but also mindful that this is going to require some serious planning to, to try, at least try to make up the gaps in the fall?
Yeah, uh, they have not. Uh, most of the guidance that's coming out now is about right now, uh, and, and not necessarily about looking ahead. Uh, you know, and maybe the mayor can chime in. I've heard nothing about, uh, and I assume that at some point we will, uh, impact on, uh, on funding. Um, you know, we were set to receive a, um, a very generous, um, allocation, uh, from the state. I've, I've heard nothing about that, uh, either. Um, I will tell you, um, inasmuch as we are, uh, working every day really hard, I mean, you, you heard, um, uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero mentioned earlier about, you know, the number of Zoom calls, the number of, um, uh, you know, the, the daily, you know, the, the thinking that goes in every day, um, to meeting students' needs, to next steps, to, to looking ahead. Um, we have still given some thought to, um, you know, once this, once this ends, like, you know, there, there is, there, there will be an FY twenty-one, right? Um, we are like this close to finishing our, our plan for that. Um, and I'm not talking about the Student Opportunity Act written plan. I mean, just, um, coming up with, uh, how we, how we might, um, uh, uh, structure a budget for FY twenty-one. Matter of fact, really, really close. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, there's already been some talk about, um, uh, you know, how, how curriculum maps might change and what we might need to do to, uh, to address the, the learning loss. But that doesn't mean necessarily that, um, you, you can't also be talking about like steps forward at the same time. It's not necessarily all, you know, looking back and trying to account for that. Uh, I think one of the really nice outcomes from, um, the work that's been going on to meet students and families' needs is, uh, I, you know, our, our, our teachers have done some amazing things with technology. Um, we have become, and, and not to say that we weren't, um, you know, didn't have that dexterity beforehand, um, but I think people have really stretched themselves, um, you know, finding new programs, figuring out different ways to engage students, to, to connect with students. And so I think without even trying, we just, we just had a very strong universal, for, universal design for learning professional development, um, out of circumstance, uh, that I think is going to have a really significant and measurable impact on, uh, how things feel in classrooms next year. Now, this is just me talking, my opinion, uh, but I, but I, I could hazard a guess that as we start to put plans together and start to look at the way instructions going to happen next year, uh, I, I can make a pretty strong guess that you, you're going to see some evolved practices as a result of this.
Well, I'm happy to follow up with, uh, the question related to the budget. Uh, I haven't heard anything, but I would anticipate that we should be thinking more conservatively than what the recommendations were from the original governance proposal. You know, I, I served in the Senate during oh, oh, eight, oh, nine, and ten, and, uh, legislature really worked hard to, um, make sure that local aid and chapter, chapter seventy monies were continually what were funded during what was a really substantial crisis then. Um, so I would anticipate they're going to be challenged to get the budget. They pushed the, uh, tax, tax, uh, um, filing deadline to July fifteenth, which is going to cause revenue, um, you know, flow, uh, problems with the Commonwealth and they're going to have to figure out how to do that. What are they going to do with their, uh, the three point, uh, two billion or three point four billion, uh, rainy day fund? I'm not saying that we're going to have less money, but I would anticipate that we're, you know, over the next few weeks, we'll start to get a bit of, you know, what the budget looks like. I would suggest, and I'm sure Kevin, speaking this as well, that, um, we probably need to think a little bit more conservatively on what we anticipate than what the, um, original proposal was, particularly if this continues to play out over time. Uh, with unemployment exploding, our revenue not coming in and other things happening, uh, it's, it's going to be, uh, um, an interesting discussion, uh, related to the budget. But, uh, at this point, I've not heard anything. I just, uh, I just instinctively think there's going to be, uh, substantial challenges at the state level, uh, and will be depending on federal, on federal dollars coming in across the board. So it's, uh, I think we as a committee and then as a school system, uh, need to be prepared for all kinds of challenges that we, I, I think we all kind of foresee, uh, coming forward as this continues to play over the next couple of months.
Thank you. I, I have another question, but I'll, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, we have Member Castellanos, I think, had a question, then Member Ford.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about the remote learning plan. I really, you know, hats off to the teachers out there who are on Zoom. I'm hearing a lot of feedback, positive feedback from that, teachers engaging with their students. Um, this is uncharted territory for them. Um, there's a lot of work being put into these, these plans. It's not what they're, this isn't what they're trained for. They're usually in classes and this is not their everyday environment and they're stepping up. Um, I appreciate the leadership, uh, from the union. Um, I have a, it, it turns to just literacy. I know we always have, we have a literacy event, Celebrate Day Literacy, and what comes to my, what comes in mind, uh, when it comes to remote learning, I saw the, um, Facebook page. We, we have teachers, faculty reading books, uh, but those children who don't have access to tech, we're going back to technology, they don't have the same opportunity there. And I know we have books at, at school, we have, the library's closed, but is there, would there be a possible opportu, to allow to distribute books, like children's books to K two-five students? Or even like communicate with teachers on, you know, getting those books to those students and kind of gathering volunteers? I know we've been working with volunteers across the city on getting these books to children, but I, I would love to have something in play just so these kids who really need that literacy time. Because a lot of kids, you know, they're, they're at home, they're not getting the same time. Um, and that's something that obviously as we discuss literacy, um, it's a very scary time for those kids. And how are we going to push those kids in a position where we can save them?
Uh, I'll say something quickly and then I'll, I'll, I'll turn to, uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero or Powers on, um, access to Scholastic. Um, but I'll say quickly, um, we, we just got, uh, several hundred, um, books that are on the grade three level, uh, about the census, uh, and we will be looking to distribute those. Um, you know, very, and I've actually seen them and they're in English and Spanish. Uh, so those are coming, but, um, Kim, or Deb, do you want to speak to Scholastic or the, the other opportunities for families to grab, get their hands on books?
So, most of the, most of that is online. Um, so we've been given permission by Reach for Reading, by Scholastic, by a number of, um, authors to access those books online. And I know what you're talking about, Brian, is act, is actually getting books in kids' hands. That may be a project that we can undertake. Um, we don't have a plan for that at the moment. The, the access to reading really online. I will say that Molly Cohen, Principal Cohen, did, uh, got a donation of books from somewhere. I don't know from where, but she, um, had packed them in Ziploc bags of like two or three books in a bag and had put them at the lunch site at Marshall for families to take when, uh, they came to get lunches. But that's, um, as far as I know, that's as far as the book distributing that, that has happened at this point. Everything else, like Kim said, is, is online.
So if, if someone wants to donate books, where could we direct them to? Where would be a good location? Would there be opportunities? Because I feel like this organizing occurring now, people want to help, they just don't know how or where to do that.
I think the one challenge, Brian, with that is the, uh, you know, we're asking people to stay home. We're really doing social distancing, though the question would be how do we actually access the books and then get them out to people with, ensuring that people and the, and the families are safe? So I think it's a great idea. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but I think we need to identify how we're going to, if that is the case, what would be the, the way that we could implement it in a way that, that reflects the reality, um, of what we're facing.
Well, Mayor, I, I bring that up because we're, we're in a, a situation where technology's not readily, it's not going to be readily available for everybody. So books, that's kind of a supplement in terms of just not being able to really purchase technologies for every student. So we got kids who, obviously, we, we, we're going to prioritize to get them to the finish line. What about, what about the other kids? That's why I bring that up, so.
It's a great point. I, I don't disagree and, and I'm not saying we can't do it, but I think we need to think about the logistics. If people are willing to make books available, absolutely. It's something we should, we should look to and I think working with the administration and the, uh, the Board of Health and, and what we, or the, uh, the Health Director, what we need to do to make that happen. Um, but, uh, again, I'm not ruling it out. I just wanted to put that out there as, as we're trying to navigate this, uh, this uncertain times. Um, it's, I think it'd be great to get some of those things in if we can, uh, with the administration, talk further about what the logistics would be that happen. So if you have resources, absolutely have them reach out. Um, uh, I think to the Superintendent of the Administration and then we can figure out where we go from there. Thank you. Uh, Member Ford?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, comment on, um, Ms. Gately's, um, the, uh, school vacation week, the four days. And, and I think it's, it's very important to have that as school time, uh, because of the, the kids' world is so disruptive right now and it will add some stability to the educational part. But I think the first thing we have to consider is, is the, uh, Sheila O'Neill and the teachers. I think the teachers, you know, based on what they're going through right now, which is, which is tough times, uh, they may need a break and I think that's something we should, before we make a decision one way or another for that week, how we're going to go, uh, the four days, I think we should reach out to the teachers and see if they may need some downtime.
Thank you, John. I think the Superintendent has talked about that or I think that, that's part of the discussion. Member Sadoway, and again, I don't see you up, Member Capola. I apologize if you have some questions, please, after Member Sadoway jump in. Okay, great. Member Sadoway?
Thank you. Patrick, I just had a question, um, I have two questions. One, uh.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero, did you have a comment related to that? And then we'll go to Member Sadoway.
Uh, I just got, um, a message from Sheila O'Neill, the Teachers Union President, saying that she would look into First Book, which is a company we have used for quite a few years to get books, uh, and look into purchasing some new books that can be distributed. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And I also wonder if, um, Skills USA have, have any access books from the, uh, drive they did last year?
I can check with, um, Principal Cass, uh, Karakadis on that as well.
Uh, so, uh, Patrick, uh, what are other, uh, at this particular time with, um, with their enriched learning, is this, is this also not counted as a grade? Um, and then I, I want to know what your input or your thought process is on, now that we are going to have almost majority of this part of the school year really gone for us, uh, this incomplete data is going to impact us for, for a long time, uh, in my opinion, because we're not going to have almost two or three months worth of data, um, uh, to, to go base off of. Um, and that, that could have some consequences.
Hmm, so, um, the first part of your question, I, I, it, it broke up a little bit. If, if I understood it correctly, you were asking, um, what are other districts?
Urban districts like us doing right now for the student, student body?
So last, uh, today is Thursday, this was last Friday. Um, last Friday, there was, uh, a call with, um, uh, the Urban Superintendent, um, Urban Superintendent Network. Uh, and I would say that, uh, our plan, uh, is almost identical to most of the plans, uh, for districts that look like ours. Um, there are varying degrees of technology, uh, among the urbans and, I mean, everybody, I'm sure, read about what Boston did, uh, and read about what, what Lawrence did, uh, and I'm happy to talk about those. I know a little bit about Lawrence anyway, about how they pulled that off. But, um, in any case, with respect to, to, to grading and how they're approaching, um, you know, the, the, the enrichment materials not being mandatory and being, you know, giving feedback on them, I'd say that's almost a universal truth among, um, what I would consider peer districts. Remind me of the rest of your question.
That has to do with incomplete data that we're going to have for this school year and, and what, it's going to have some consequences and for our future decisions and, and future metrics. Would you agree?
Uh, I, for us and everybody else, um, I, consequences, I, I would say, I mean, you, you, you do have, um, you know, the first half of the year to, to, to bring to bear on your thinking and, you know, quite frequently when we look at, and sometimes when we do presentations, um, uh, at the school committee level, we'll, we'll look at, you know, attendance from, you know, September to December for the past three years. Like, we'll just look at that specific chunk of time and compare it to other, uh, years that say. that same uh, specific chunk. So I mean, it's not, there, there's still some value, um, lots of value in what's, what's happened this year in terms of uh, areas for growth, uh, thinking about next steps in terms of certain initiatives, but I, um, you know, if, if one thing that you're thinking about is accountability, um, the commissioner has not come out and publicly declared, actually, he's not been given the legal right to do anything with accountability. I know that there's um, legislation filed uh, by the governor to give the commissioner that um, wide latitude with accountability. Um, at this point, again, you know, ELA, that, that's been postponed. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're getting close to um, the math sections. Um, I, I'm not sure what's going to happen with that. My, my hope is that they just declare this year, um, you know, no from an accountability standpoint and start again fresh next year.
And, and my last question, and this is a, a, an unfortunate one, but um, do we have a, a plan or an alternative plan in place uh, in the event that one of our staff or teachers or students passes away from the COVID-19 um, illness virus? Are we?
Um, when you say plan, like, what, what do you, what do you mean?
Uh, the, the, to cope and to have that social, emotional connection with students to, to get through, something like that, because uh, as you know, some of our students uh, have cancer or, or severe illnesses and if they were to catch the COVID-19, it could impact them. Um, you know, we, we, we have a very diverse group of uh, staff in our schools, um, you know, that have, they have pre-existing medical conditions and whatnot. So I just want to make sure that we have uh, something in place uh, in, in the event that a staff, a teacher or a student passes from, from this uh, you know, this unprecedented um, and not really unknown um, virus that's spreading in the, the city.
No, I, okay, I, I understand. Uh, so um, I, I would say that our, um, I mentioned before, the social workers, the SACS, um, they are completely on it right now because what students and families are experiencing, as you just described, hasn't really happened before in our lifetime, uh, and it's very scary, traumatic in fact. And so they're already um, deeply engaged with families and offering supports, um, should there be the unfortunate um, scenario where in there's a, a death, either student or, or staff member, um, you know, no matter in this context or any context, that's going to be a really challenging experience for staff and students. This makes it even harder because we, we can't even be in the same space to offer those supports. Um, so um, you know, is there a written plan? I'd say no, there's not, but we would leverage the same or, or, or approach it in the same way. It would just have to be through, you know, phone and other, other mechanisms. Um, it is just, we wouldn't be able to provide like in-person support or counseling for, for those who need it. Um, but, but I, rest assured that um, Carolyn Troy, Tina Huthnagle, uh, they are, and, and the whole team of social workers, school adjustment counselors, clinical directors, are, are, are very much on the front lines, offering supports for families and ever willing to provide support should something unfortunate like that happen. Thank you.
Member Nicholson?
My other question um, was uh, something that I think is, 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 isn't, isn't quite the priority as a lot of what we talked about tonight, but one thing I, I thought worth raising, as we're asking our students and teachers to spend vastly more time online on computers than we have in the past, has there been any uh, opportunity to, to, to share some uh, resources that are up with the curriculum around best practices online, specifically around like, um, online safety, uh, staying uh, safe on the internet, protecting your data, um, uh, the kinds of things that you would want to teach uh, students as they're entering this, this world of, of spending a lot of their time online? Um, because I think, you know, uh, that, that, there, there will be people who are putting more information online, as they spend more time online and, and helping students develop those uh, habits and practices to know how to protect themselves and their data and the family's data, um, could be, could be helpful.
Yeah, no, it, it, it would indeed and um, that is not a stone that we've yet turned in a sort of, in a uniform way, um, you know, in terms of, you know, bringing students' awareness up around those sorts of things. I'd say related, um, uh, the same so, um, maybe not necessarily exactly uh, parallel with what you described, but the same so for staff. I mean, we've had to, you know, we're getting to have conversations and set up guidance and um, uh, sort of a protocol around um, things like um, mandated reporting, so, right, right? So that still is a reality, is still a requirement in this different approach to teaching and learning in which we're engaging now and having people be mindful and follow a different sort of reporting process, uh, given that, um, you know, we're not, you know, in classrooms or in schools with students. So um, yeah, I mean, what you mentioned is, is absolutely spot on, you know, one of many things that like, you know, as uh, I think Deputy Superintendent Ruggiero was saying earlier, you know, the minute you think you're, you're getting close to being, you know, quote unquote, finished with a plan, several more uh, you know, sides of the, of that plan open up that need to be addressed and need to be communicated. So um, but what you mentioned is, is, is absolutely something we should be working to solidify.
Thank you.
Um, I think that's it on the agenda. Uh, I would like to, before we uh, move on, I, I really want to, well, thank the committee for, um, and uh, you know, John Mahos, Mary Nann, and, and all the people that are on this second um, teleconference school committee meeting. It's definitely a different, a different way of doing business than we've been used to and anybody in the community has been used to, but I think it's been uh, really well done and I want to thank Jared as well for helping out and Don Hesse for putting this together. Thank, thank all of you for uh, for your commitment and your dedication and, and the ongoing efforts we have together to, to move through uh, these challenging times. And I think it's important to really thank the teachers and the faculty, the administration, and just as importantly, the families that are dealing with this, uh, with their children and trying to ensure that their kids get an, the students get an opportunity to get an education through this time and, and we're all working on that same goal. Uh, you know, with the unemployment spiking through the roof and people are struggling to make ends meet while we're pretty much staying home and, 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 and to keep our community safe, this really is a tough time. So I think all of us together uh, really need to uh, uh, move in, in the direction that we're all part of this community to make sure we're safe, that we work towards ensuring the kids get what they need, uh, and we keep the community safe. And I, I, I know it's, I know it's really tough uh, to stay in, but it's really important during this time as, as these cases continue to spike in Massachusetts, Ian and Lynn, that people stay home unless you need, have to go out. Uh, I mean, walking if you're out and exercising, stay away from others, keep the social distancing. And, and I know it's really hard for the students in the city to um, be dealing with this, not only on the educational side, but being in the house every day. So it's a, I can comment on all of us to really work hard, be safe, and, and I know that we're all staying apart, but by staying apart and being, being safe, we can really be together on making this, uh, helping us get through this and beat this challenge that we all face together. So I want to thank all of you for being part of this and again, as part of this community, uh, as we, as everyone struggles with um, so many different, not only the health side, but the economic side, we're, we're all in this together as a community and, and we'll get through it together as a community. So thank you all for all the work you do. And um, with that, unless there's any other uh, comments or discussion, um, open for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? There were motions or second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close, no, the ayes have it. Thank you all, have a good night and we will talk-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Good night. Thanks.